Good evening. Welcome to the City of Madeira Beach Board of Commissioners meeting. Today is Wednesday, November 12th. Commissioner Lister, would you lead us in the invocation?
I certainly will, Vice Mayor. Thank you very much.
Please do remain standing for the pledge to the flag.
Please stand while we say a prayer. Our most gracious heavenly Father, as the citizens of the City of Madeira Beach meet together to address our local concerns and opportunities, we give thanks to you for the bounty that we enjoy in all aspects of our community life and for the peace and beauty that we enjoy each day. We ask for your inspiration to strive for excellence in our endeavors to serve the public, grant us peace and harmony between all people for your greater glory. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The City Clerk, if you please, take the role, please.
Vice Mayor Hodges?
Here.
Commissioner Lister?
Here.
Commissioner Poe?
Here.
Commissioner Schatz?
Here.
Mayor Palladino.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion for the approval of the minutes.
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes.
Second it.
Minutes have been, the minutes, approval of the minutes have been, motion has been made and seconded. Any further come discussion? Amy, could you please take the role?
Vice Mayor Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Poe?
Yes.
Commissioner Schatz?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino.
Next item would be the approval of the agenda. Mr. City Manager?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. A couple of issues on the agenda first, under item E, the presentation to Doug Spielert. We're asking that that be referred at his request. A family member of his wanted to be present and couldn't make it tonight. In all probability, this may go to the January or February meeting due to the list of people that we're presenting to. So, right now, I think we can just put it on the table, and I'll take it off the table when necessary. Also, under the consent agenda, items two, three, and four can be grouped together, but the City Attorney and I are asking that you take out items one and five. Item number one is a contract that we want you to go ahead and approve tonight pending a City Attorney approval, very similar to an issue that we had last week. Also, number five, right now, and you need to approve this, we need to change it slightly. It's going to be an authorization of expenditures for six, not eight, boat lifts for the municipal marina in the estimated amount of fifty-three thousand, three hundred and forty dollars. Those are the only changes we have.
Okay. All right, I'll entertain a motion then for the approval of the agenda.
I make a motion that we have approved the agenda with number two taken out on E and tabled, and number one and number five from the consent agenda changed, with number five being changed from eight boat lifts to six, and the amount being changed to fifty-three thousand, what was the last three?
Three hundred and forty dollars.
Three hundred and forty dollars.
I second.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? The City Clerk, please take the role.
Vice Mayor Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Poe?
Yes.
Commissioner Schatz?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino.
Just for the public's information, the mayor had requested to be absent tonight. He's on a family vacation type issue, and we'll ask for his excused absence at the next meeting.
Okay. Under the presentations, we have Vice Sheriff Bob Galatari.
Thanks. Hello, Commissioners, Vice Mayor. I just wanted to, I'm Bob Galatari, I'm the Pinellas County Sheriff, and I just wanted to stop out and say hello. Haven't been out in a while, and just make sure things are going the way you want them to go in Madeira Beach. I have a few things to share with you, but most importantly, I want to make sure that we're doing the things we need to be doing, or not doing certain things that we can help you out with, that we have a discussion about it. We certainly appreciate the appreciation day you had for the deputies. I'm sorry I couldn't be here, I think it was two weeks ago, and I had a bunch of stuff on my schedule that day, but I know about it, and very appreciative of everything you did to recognize the work that they're doing out here. Just a couple of things I wanted to share with you that are going on, and I think you've received invitations for the open house that we have coming up here next Monday at the new sheriff's administration building, and there's another date in December, and hopefully you'll have a chance to come and see what is behind the scenes that drives the operation of the sheriff's office, and also the new consolidated county communication center with nine-one-one. And something else that's important to, really, to everybody and to all the elected officials throughout the county is the county's emergency operations center. It's one of those facilities that you hope you never need, but if we do, it's very important, especially out here in Madeira Beach and up and down all the barrier islands. So, if you can join us, we'd love to have you to see that new two-hundred-and-twenty-thousand square foot facility that is, again, the infrastructure behind everything that happens in the sheriff's office. But along the lines of the emergency operations center is, I want you to know about an initiative that we started this year, will be finished before the hurricane season next year, and that has to do with reentry. Up and down the barrier islands, from St. Pete Beach all the way up to Clearwater Beach, it was very inconsistent as to how that would happen if there wasn't evacuation, and how people would get back onto the beaches. And under a county ordinance, the sheriff is responsible for reentry throughout all of the barrier islands, and we had no way consistently of knowing who belonged and who didn't belong. Some communities were using hang tags, some were using cards, some were using all different things, and some had nothing. So, we decided to implement a hang tag and barcoded system that's color-coded. And we're picking up the bill for it, we're buying the scanners, we're buying the barcodes, we're working with everybody throughout the barrier island community, not only for the residents, but the business owners and also the employees of the business. One of the things that's going to be very important to the business owners out here is that when they can reenter, that they can get their employees out here to get the businesses cleaned up and get them back in operation. And we want to make sure it's done safely, and it's done efficiently, and so that each community will have a color-coded barcode, so that you don't have people that are passing between the communities, so Reddington will be different from Madeira, and Madeira will be different from Clearwater, so you don't have people going all up and down. And it should be a fast process, because the deputies at all the checkpoints will have a scanner, and everything will, again, be barcoded, and people should be able to move through it pretty fast. We'll have that in place before next hurricane season. It should be by May of 2015 that that'll be in place. So, I just wanted to share that with you, that'll be a little bit of a change, and again, it's one of those things that we need to have it, but we hope we never need it. So, is there anything I can do for you, answer for you? Everything good here in Madeira Beach as far as the sheriff's office is concerned?
Everything's great in Madeira Beach as far as the sheriff's department, but I was asking, what is our responsibility for the barcoding end of it? Are you going to send us a package out, and we're going to give it to our residents?
Yeah, we're working with the City Manager on it, and all the details are being worked out now, and each community's going to do it differently. Some are going to do it where people come to City Hall, some of the smaller ones, the Bell Air Beaches are a little bit different than St. Pete Beach, and all those details, we're still working out all those details. But we have representatives on the committee from every city throughout all the barrier islands.
So, we're just going to have the officers on the bridges, is that when they come back, so you don't have to do from town to town to town?
Right.
Reddington's that way?
Right. So, you've got to, you've got down in St. Pete Beach, you've got a couple of entry points down there, of course, up in Clearwater, you've got big ones. So, you know, Park Boulevard Bridge, Indian Rocks, here coming over Tom Stewart. So, there's, you know, if you count them, I don't know what there are, seven, eight, nine, entry access points, each one of them would be staffed. And in the past, and I remember doing it years ago, well, we had some, it was, you know, quite a feat and sometimes a mess, because every car would have to stop, somebody would have to show a driver's license, and then the driver's license they have, they moved out here two months ago, but it shows an address over in Tampa, and I've got to get to my business, and I can't, and people get frustrated.
Absolutely.
And we don't want them to be frustrated. What we want is, we want the right people here, so they can get back in, check on their property, and that the business owners who don't live here, even some of them, can get to their property, and importantly, their employees can get in. So, we tried to be very comprehensive in how we went about this, and I'm comfortable it's going to, it'll be a good thing if we ever need it.
And you're paying for it.
We're paying for it.
Wow, couldn't get better than that.
Not asking for it. Can't get better than that. Not asking anybody for anything.
That's fantastic.
Yeah, I know.
My comment would be that, you know, we get deputies here, community police officers, and we think we have the best deputy, and then you kick him up the ranks, because he is a good deputy.
Yeah.
And you replace him with somebody just as good.
Good.
So, thank you.
Yeah, good.
Your deputy training is top-notch and very professional, and I'm just, and not in my personal opinion, I can go out and talk to 50 people, and they're going to say the same thing.
Good. Well, I appreciate that, and I know, you know, when Sean left out here, and you know, and Todd and Pat are here, it is that, you know, we're very careful and very selective as to who we put in the cities, especially here, and we want to make sure it's done. I just wanted to get out and say hello. I haven't been out in a while, and the last thing I want to do is have you only see me if there's a problem. So, I want to come by when, you know, hopefully things are good, and let you know that we're here, we value the relationship with Madeira Beach and its citizens, it's very important to us, and we want to make sure that it stays the way it's going for a very long time. So, thank you.
Don't go away.
Away, okay.
There you go. I have to tell you something that happened today in our city, been working on it for two years. Deputy Luckett, Deputy Krager, took their first cases before Tom and the special magistrate today for the chronic nuisance property ordinance.
Yes.
And they kicked butt.
Good, good. Glad to hear it.
We are very happy.
Yeah, and you all have been very innovative with that. I mean, that ordinance is, you know, is very innovative, and I'm glad to hear it's working. So, that's good news, good news for the city.
Yeah, Sheriff, from my standpoint, you know, from Sergeant Tassano on down, it's just, it's been a pleasure to work with your team, Luckett and Robo, call them Robocop, Krager, they've been a welcome change, and like you said, you know, not every personality matches with every community, and I think that you guys do a very good job with that, and so we couldn't be happier. It's really, really, really working well. And I hope, hopefully, Madeira Beach was somewhat of a trendsetter in regards to this code enforcement stuff, too, because it's really working slick, and if you ever need a poster boy or whatever for that type of sale to other communities, I'd certainly be happy to do it, because I think it's really come a long way since we've made it a little bit more sophisticated type operation.
Good, and it has already, you all set the tone for that, and St. Pete Beach is now on board, and Reddington's now on board with it. We had some discussion recently, in Bell Air Beach, they decided to go in a different direction, but the model works, and it has worked very well. So, I wouldn't be surprised to see some others follow, and you all blaze the trail with that, so I think it's a good thing, yeah.
And you know you're doing something right if you can get a hug from Elaine Poe. I saw both you guys get a hug before, so you know you're in good shape.
I may be short, but I have tall standards.
That's right, that's right, and that's great, no, it's a good thing, so. But, no, we appreciate it, and, but, you know, I'm here for you, we're here for you. You need anything, contact me directly. I know that, you know, you're changing, constant contact with Sergeant Tassano and with others, but know that we appreciate you, and we appreciate the relationship with the city of Madeira Beach. Thank you.
And I'd like to thank you. You know, we've had a relationship with the sheriff's department for some years. Madeira Beach was the first to step up, bringing the sheriff's department to the city. And certainly, it's progressed onward and onward, a wonderful experience.
It's better every year.
And it's just the best. The guys are always pretty, very nice, and when they're doing the town, the work that they do, that was personally, oh, wow, it's not going to be like having your own police department. And you've made it that.
Good.
We consider them our police department.
That's right.
And you should, yeah, and that's good, that's the way we want it, that's the way we, you know, design it, and have the deputies that are here that are part of your community.
You know, you've made it when your postman actually gets out of his cart and comes and knocks on your front door and tells you how great your city looks.
Yeah, that's a good thing, that is a good thing, that's great, good, good. Well, I appreciate the few minutes of talking to you, and like you said, need anything, let us know, and hopefully we'll see you at one of those two open houses. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sheriff.
I appreciate your relationship.
The next part of the agenda is for public comment. We're asking that be limited to three minutes. Is there anyone here tonight that would like to speak? Okay, I'll close that portion of the meeting.
Madam Vice Mayor, maybe if we want, sheriff's department staff is more than welcome to stay, but I wouldn't put you through the pain of staying through this meeting if you don't need to, so if you want to exit, now's your shot, so take it or leave it.
Thank you, Captain.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye.
Okay, the next item will be under the consent agenda. Do I need to give this to you?
No. Yeah, I think to start out with, Madam Vice Mayor, if you'd like, you can ask for a blanket motion to approve for items two, three, and four, unless anyone has any questions about those.
I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda items two, three, and four.
I second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? The City Clerk, can you take the role, please?
Vice Mayor Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Poe?
Yes.
Commissioner Schatz?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino.
Okay, the next item will be under unfinished business?
Nope, Madam Sheriff, then we have to go back to item number one.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. And the reason why that we're asking for this is we need just you to add a little bit of verbiage to the motion, and the reason for that is the contract came in late, and the City Attorney wasn't able to read it, and there's a couple of things in there that he has some concerns about, and we'll probably have to address, and so if we can get a motion to approve the authorization of expenditures for Gulf Boulevard landscaping design services in the estimated amount of thirty-six thousand, seven hundred dollars pending the City Attorney's approval. What this is, is CPWG, who is our engineer on the Gulf Boulevard project, both doing the lap part of it, which is the construction of the road, but then also the utility bearing, that sizable grant that we got to do the landscaping services, this is to sign them up to do that as well. So, one engineer on the entire project makes the most sense, obviously. So, that's all this is, but Tom needs to take a look at it and work with the vendor in regards to maybe some verbiage that needs to be deleted. So, if you just want to make a motion to approve pending the City Attorney's approval, we're good to go.
I want to ask a question. Is this the amount that was authorized to spend on Gulf Boulevard some years ago, you know, we had to spend in application with every plant and whatever we were going to plant there, so is this part of that, or is this new?
This is a new gig, a new part of that with that new grant that we landed, so I think it's over a hundred thousand dollars, plus we have all that beautification money, so it all is going to depend on how much it's going to cost us to bury that utility, and that all depends on that experimental part that we'll be doing in early spring. So, it's all going to, it's a lot of moving pieces, but we'll see where we end up. But this is, this money is in the budget, and we're good to go.
Okay.
So, I make a motion, we authorize the expenditures for Gulf Boulevard landscaping design services in the estimated amount of thirty-six thousand, seven hundred dollars pending the City Attorney's approval.
I second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? The City Clerk, could you take the role, please?
Vice Mayor Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Poe?
Yes.
Commissioner Schatz?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino.
Okay, then, Madam Vice Mayor, under item number five, under the approval of the agenda tonight, you amended this to read authorization of expenditures for six boat lifts for the municipal marina in the estimated amount of fifty-three thousand, three hundred and forty dollars. Dave is killing it out there on this boat, or at his marina project, and we want to keep the momentum going, and so by doing this, what we found was a Gulfport contract that we can piggyback off of for six of the eight additional lifts that Dave wants to buy. Chances are, there's two higher-capacity weight-limit lifts that he wants to buy that we couldn't find a contract for yet, so either we'll find a contract for that that we can piggyback off of, or we'll just put that out for bid. But this keeps Dave, keeps everything in motion for Dave, so he can continue on.
I make a motion that this commission authorize the expenditures for six boat lifts for the municipal marina in the estimated amount of fifty-three thousand, three hundred and forty dollars.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made, motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? The City Clerk, could you please take the role?
Vice Mayor Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Poe?
Yes.
Commissioner Schatz?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino.
I'd like to commend Dave on the job he's done at that marina. And anyone in this town ought to take a look at his, and see what a beautiful thing that turned into the marvelous, the three-year-old star.
It's going to be something else when it's all done.
I'm telling you.
You know, just changing out that fuel dock alone, I think, has done such a facelift to that one area, and then you see some of the other things Dave's doing out there. It's a pretty spectacular sight, so.
It's a property that's got to be, and I think of what it used to look like, what it looked like, wow. I can say, David, wow, you've done a job.
Would you believe in the middle of the, toward the end of the seventies, we actually spent three months in the Madeira Beach Marina, while we were re-provisioning our bet.
Yeah.
So, I remember what it looked like.
Yeah, we don't have to tell you.
In the dark ages.
Okay, we'll move on to the unfinished business then. And the first one is under the ordinance two-zero-one-four-dash-seven, Mr. City Attorney.
I have this as ordinance twenty-fourteen-dash-zero-nine is the first one. I'll read it by title only, this is the second and final reading. Ordinance two-thousand-fourteen-dash-zero-nine, an ordinance to the City of Madeira Beach, Florida, amending the Madeira Beach Comprehensive Plan, Section 3.2, Future Land Use Element, Policy 1.1.2, providing for the amendment of the Resorts Facilities Medium RFM Plan category, providing for an additional land use category entitled Resorts Facilities High, RFH, pursuant to the specific procedures and standards set forth herein and in the city's Code of Ordinances, providing for the amendment of the Planned Redevelopment and Mixed Use, PRMU Plan category, to accommodate increased density/intensity for temporary lodging use consistent with and corresponding to revisions and update of the Town Center Special Area Plan, amending Section 3.2, Future Land Use Element, Goal Two, Objective 2.1, Policies 2.1.2, 2.1.3, and 2.1.4, providing specific authorization for the use of density/intensity averaging, the procedures and standards for which shall be set forth in the city's Code of Ordinances, providing for reading by title only, providing for severability, providing for repeal of ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith, and providing for an effective date thereof. That was a reading of ordinance two-thousand-fourteen-dash-zero-nine by title only, and it requires a public hearing.
Okay, at this time, I'll open it for public discussion.
Now, we got to make a motion.
Make a motion first, make a, get a motion for a public hearing.
Okay. All right, I'll entertain-
Make a motion that we pass ordinance twenty-fourteen-oh-nine on second and final reading.
I second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Do you open it for the public discussion at this time?
Yes.
Okay, we will open it now for public discussion. Okay. The City Clerk, please take the role.
Vice Mayor Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Poe?
Yes.
Commissioner Schatz?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino.
Okay, the next one will be ordinance number two-zero-one-four-dash-zero-eight, Mr. City Attorney.
Yes, I'll read it by title only, this is the second and final reading as well. Ordinance two-thousand-fourteen-dash-zero-eight, an ordinance to the City of Madeira Beach, Florida, amending the Madeira Beach Code of Ordinances, Subpart B, Land Development Regulations, by amending Chapter eighty-two, General Provisions, Section eighty-two-dash-two, Definitions, to provide for the term of density/intensity averaging, by amending Chapter eighty-six, Administration, to establish a new Article Five, entitled Density/Intensity Averaging, and setting forth the requisite procedures and standards therefore. By amending Chapter one-ten, Zoning, Article Five, Districts, Division One, Generally, Section one-ten-dash-one-fifty-one, Establishment of Districts, providing for the addition of the PD Plan Development District to the list of zoning cap, excuse me, list of zoning districts, amending Chapter one-ten, Zoning, Article Five, Districts, Division ten, PD Plan Development, Section one-ten-dash-three-eighty-six, Purpose, Section one-ten-dash-three-eighty-seven, Uses permitted, and Section one-ten-dash-three-eighty-eight, Application for PD Zoning, providing for the required use of the PD District in conjunction with the Resorts Facility High Plan category, providing for temporary lodging use in the PD District, providing for the required submission of a development plan in conjunction with, and simultaneously with an application for PD District zoning, providing for reading by title only, providing for severability, providing for repeal of ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith, and providing for an effective date thereof. That was the second and final reading of ordinance two-thousand-fourteen-dash-zero-eight by title only, and it does require a public hearing.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion to-
I make a motion that we pass ordinance two-thousand-fourteen-dash-o-eight on second and final reading.
I second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Is there any, it's an open discussion for anyone in the audience? The City Clerk, could you please take the role?
Vice Mayor Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Poe?
Yes.
Commissioner Schatz?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino.
Okay, the next one is ordinance number two-zero-one-four-dash-zero-seven.
Yes, this is the second and final reading of ordinance two-thousand-fourteen-dash-zero-seven by title only, an ordinance to the City of Madeira Beach, Florida, providing for amendment of the Madeira Beach Town Center Special Area Plan, providing for the revision of Chapter Two, Regulatory Plan and Guidelines with respect to development standards governing the density/intensity calculations for temporary logic and mixed uses, providing for the revision of Chapter Three, Implementation with respect to the strategies to promote redevelopment, providing for the revision of Appendix B, Infrastructure Analysis, to update and revise the infrastructure impacts correspondent with current data and the proposed revisions to Chapters Two and Three referenced above. Providing for transmittal of the Madeira Beach Town Center Special Area Plan is amended for review pursuant to the countywide plan and rules. Providing for reading by title only, providing for severability, providing for repeal of ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith, and providing for an effective date thereof. That was the second final reading of ordinance two-thousand-fourteen-dash-zero-seven by title only, and it does require a public hearing as well.
Madam Vice Mayor, I move that ordinance two-zero-fourteen-dash-o-seven be passed on second and final reading.
I second that.
Motion's been made and seconded. Open for discussion? The City Clerk, could you take the role?
Public.
I'm sorry.
We need to open to the public.
Open to the public, I'm sorry. Public discussion?
Okay.
The City Clerk, just take the role, please.
Vice Mayor Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Poe?
Yes.
Commissioner Schatz?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino.
Next will be ordinance number two-zero-one-four-dash-12.
Yes, this is the second and final reading of ordinance two-thousand-fourteen-dash-12. I'll read it by title only, an ordinance to the City of Madeira Beach, Florida, updating Madeira Beach's Comprehensive Plan Capital Improvement Element to adopt an addendum to the five-year schedule of capital improvements for two-thousand-fourteen-fifteen through two-thousand-eighteen-nineteen, providing for reading by title only, providing for severability, providing for repeal of ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith, and providing for an effective date thereof. That was the reading of ordinance two-thousand-fourteen-dash-12 by title only, and it requires a public hearing.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we pass ordinance two-thousand-fourteen-dash-12 on second and final reading.
I second.
Motion's been made and seconded. It's open for the public discussion? Okay, City Clerk, please take the role.
Vice Mayor Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Poe?
Yes.
Commissioner Schatz?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino.
Next will be ordinance number 2014-13.
Yes, this is the second reading of ordinance 2014-13. I'll read it by title only, in ordinance of the city of Madeira Beach, Florida, calling for a general municipal election on March 10th, 2015, for the purpose of electing a commissioner for District 3 and a commissioner for District 4, providing authorization for the city clerk to sign contract with the Pinellas County Supervisor of Elections, providing for publication, authorizing election expenditures identifying the Pinellas County Canvassing Board as the canvassing board for the March 10, 2015 election, authorizing for runoff election if necessary, providing for repeal of ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith to the extent of such conflict, and providing for an effective date. That was the second and final reading of ordinance 2014-13 by title only, and it also requires a public hearing.
This time I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion to pass ordinance 2014-13 on second reading.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there public discussion? The city clerk, please take the role.
Vice Mayor Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Poe?
Yes.
Commissioner Schatz?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino.
Next will be the ordinance number 2014-14.
This is the second and final reading of ordinance 2014-14 by title only, in ordinance of the city of Madeira Beach, Florida, amending the City of Madeira Beach Code of Ordinances, Chapter 14 Buildings and Building Regulations, Article 1 in general, Section 14-1 Display of Numbers mandatory, to increase the size of the numbers, Article 2 Technical Codes and Standards, Section 14-31 Fire Codes Adopted to reference the state of Florida, Section 14-32 Uniform Code for the Abatement of Dangerous Buildings to adopt the most current additions of the International Property Maintenance Code and the National Electrical Code, Article V Marine Structures Division 1 Generally, Section 14-161 Construction Repair Alterations or Raising to Conform to Provisions of Article, to reference seawall caps, and Section 14-164 Structures Upon Docks Seawall Jetties and Groynes to reference seawall caps, and providing for an effective date. That was the second and final reading of ordinance 2014-14 by title only, and I did notice that there was a typographical error. Groynes is spelled a little bit different. I think we talked about that once before. It's G-R-Y-N-E-S.
I have it right on the ordinance itself.
Okay.
G-E-S?
G, yeah, R-O-Y-N-E-S. That's the way it's supposed to be spelled, and not the groin that we're sitting on right now.
At this time I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion to pass ordinance 2014-14 on second reading.
I second it.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any public discussion? The city clerk, please take the role.
Vice Mayor Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Poe?
Yes.
Commissioner Schatz?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino.
Okay, the next section is under the New Business. We have Resolution 2014-46, and Mr. City Attorney, is this, this is title only, correct?
That's right. We're gonna read it by title. I did want, did want to let you know that we have bond counsel for the city in the audience today. Mr. Draper, Dwayne Draper, he's in the, I can't see him on the other side of the podium. I just see his feet. But he's here if you have questions about these two resolutions, if I cannot answer them. So I'm gonna read Resolution 2014-46, and for, the next one, 2014-47, also deals with the same bond issuance. So Resolution 2014-46, a resolution of the city of Madeira Beach, Florida, authorizing the issuance of not to exceed $3,500,000 principal amount of a City of Madeira Beach, Florida Interlocal Payments Revenue Bond Series 2014 for the purpose of financing and/or reimbursing the designing, permitting, acquisition, construction, equipping, and installation of improvements to Gulf Boulevard, including but not limited to undergrounding electrical cable and other utilities, replacing light fixtures, landscaping mediums, and replacement of utility poles, pledging payments received by the city from the Pinellas County pursuant to the interlocal agreement relating to the Gulf Boulevard Beautification Project, and on a junior and subordinate basis the half-cent sales tax revenues, guaranteed entitlement revenues, franchise fee revenues, and public services tax revenues to secure payment of the principal of and interest on bonds authorized to be issued hereunder, making certain covenants and agreements for the benefit of the holders of such bonds, authorizing certain officials and employees of the city to take action, excuse me, take all actions required in connection with the sale, issuance, and delivery of such bonds, providing certain other matters in connection therewith, and providing for an effective date. That was a reading of Resolution 2014-46 by title only.
Madam Vice Mayor, I make a motion that this commission pass Resolution 2014-46.
I second it.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion, public discussion?
Madam Vice Mayor, if I can have the floor, what you're committing to is something that we've discussed month after month after month for quite some time. The county is providing you $3.5 million to do a Gulf Boulevard Beautification Project. You have chosen to use this money to bury your utilities. If you remember the presentation by Steve Tartt from CPWG, we're gonna do an experimental section early springtime to see if we can bury the utility under the sidewalk. If that experiment works, chances are this $3.5 million will allow you to bury entirely the utility along Gulf Boulevard. If that experiment fails and we have to acquire easements to bury the utility, you will still have north-south wires running in this project, and you need to be very, very clear on that tonight. $3.5 million will not bury your utility entirely if we can't bury it under the sidewalk. There's a very good chance that this could work. We're all keeping our fingers crossed, but you need to be very, very aware of that. The other thing, from a political standpoint, you're going to hear is the age-old argument, you're only doing this for the businesses and the condo owners along Gulf Boulevard. What about the neighborhoods within Madeira Beach? We wouldn't be doing this along Gulf Boulevard right now if somebody wasn't giving us $3.5 million to do so. If somebody wants to give us the money to do it in a neighborhood, we'll be happy to sit down with them and do that. And the city is planning on doing that when we do our road and our stormwater improvements, but that's, the response that you need to give is that we chose to use this money that was given to us by the county to do this along Gulf Boulevard, and it's being funded by an outside entity, not your tax levy. So just those two points, I wanted to make very, very clear tonight.
And there was the stipulation that that money could only be used for the beautification of Gulf Boulevard.
Correct.
That's correct, right?
Correct.
Absolutely. Sure. So is this a five-year bond? We discussed this before, right? This is the same-
Yeah, we talked about this, I think it was last week at the workshop.
The excellent industry.
We issued an RP a couple of weeks ago. It's a five-year term, 1.43 percent, what we're expecting to close on.
Amazing. Yep. I'm good. So what's the, what's the probability that we get it at that? That's not, that's not done yet, right?
That, that happens tomorrow unless there's some-
Unless there's a hiccup tonight.
Global calamity. I mean, that's, that's the plan.
All right. Again, we've talked about it before, and I am excited about it.
Okay. The city clerk, please take the call, roll call.
Vice Mayor Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Poe?
Yes.
Commissioner Schatz?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino.
Next one will be Resolution Number 2014-47. Please read by title only.
Resolution 2014-47, a resolution of the city of Madeira Beach, Florida, supplementing a resolution adopted uneven date herewith, authorizing the issuance of an inter, of an interlocal payments revenue bond series 2014 of the city, in the principal amount of not to exceed $3,500,000 for financing and/or reimbursing the designing, permitting, acquisition, construction, equipping, and installation of improvements to Gulf Boulevard, including but not limited to undergrounding electrical, cable, and other utilities, replacing light fixtures, landscaping mediums, and replacement of utility poles, providing that the series 2014 bond shall be a limited obligation of the city payable from the payments received from the city, I'm sorry, by the city from Pinellas County pursuant to the interlocal agreement relating to the Gulf Boulevard Beautification Project, and on a subordinate basis the half-cent sales tax revenues, guaranteed entitlement revenues, franchise fee revenues, and public service tax revenues to secure payment of the principal of and interest on such bond, providing for the rights, securities, and remedies of the holders of the series 2014 bond, making such determinations as are required to afford such bond bank-qualified status, appointing a paying agent and a registrar, making certain covenants and agreements in connection therewith, establishing its intent to reimburse such capital expenditures incurred with proceeds of the series 2014 bond, and providing an effective date. That was a reading of Resolution 2014-47 by title only.
This time I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Vice Mayor, I move Resolution 2014-47 be adopted on-
I second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I have a little discussion. Why are we doing two things? Sounds like saying the same thing as the other resolution.
They're not. They're actually very different resolutions. We've got the right guy in the audience here to answer that more specifically if you'd-
Good evening. My name's Dwayne Draper, and I'm with Bryant and Hart Olive. We're privileged to be the city's bond counsel. The master resolution, which was the one you adopted first, envisions having not only this bond for this purpose issued underneath the master resolution, but in the future, under certain circumstances, you'd be able to issue parity debt for additional projects that would be satisfactory. So the first resolution is what I would call a master resolution. The second resolution actually implements the first series of, of a bond to be issued under the master resolution. So that's why they're back-to-back and separated. In the future, you would only do one resolution off of the master. The master is the, the one that we're working off of for all issues for this source of security. I hope that answers your question.
Yes, that's, that's a little confusing by the way. Resolutions saying the same-
Confusion's not the goal.
Madam Chair, I just wanna, you know, Vince has spent a lot of time on this, and I think he reassembled somewhat of a dream team when, based off of what we did on the first bond that we put together for City Hall. He really makes this process easy for a city manager. He just kinda comes in and talks to me like I'm, where I need him to be, like I'm in fourth grade, and, and makes it make sense. And I, I think we're in a good spot. That interest rate, you heard, you know, we can't go wrong. And we're in a position where it's, it's, we're not borrowing money because we have to, because we can't afford it. We're borrowing it because we have to spend it to get paid back. And so I think this is a, a, a good thing. This isn't because we're in financial ruin. In fact, I think we're in a very good financial spot. This is just kind of because of the way that the county structured their program, and it's hard to complain about getting 3.5 for nothing, so.
Yeah, I can. But, thank you very much.
Thank you. Also, want to commend Vince's work as well as Tom's. It's a very professional staff, and Shane's as well. Great, great group to work with. Thank you very much.
Can I just mention one other thing?
Sure.
He didn't say it tonight, because it's really not part of what's going on, but he has got a daughter who's competing in a huge volleyball tournament tomorrow.
Oh, my.
And is it still going on?
No.
Okay, so pretty interesting. He's got a very athletic daughter, so. So he won't be here tomorrow, but there will be someone here in his, in his stud, so.
Takes after her mom.
Okay. Good luck to her.
And Madam Vice Mayor, in lieu of the, or because of the mayor being out of town, we'll see you in the morning to sign documents.
Yes, you will, sir. Yes, you will. Okay. Okay, the next one will be Resolution 20-
We, we need to vote on that.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
We, we need to take a vote.
That's right, I'm sorry. Got ahead of myself.
Vice Mayor Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yep.
Commissioner Poe?
Yes.
Commissioner Schatz?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino.
Okay. Now we have Resolution 2014-48.
Yes, I'll go ahead and read that by title only. Resolution 2014-48, a resolution of the city of Madeira Beach, Florida, amending the FY 2015 General Fund Budget by appropriating $27,500 from prior year building reserves and reducing budget expenditures in the general fund by $27,500 and providing for an effective date. That was a reading of Resolution 2014-48 by title only.
At this time I'll entertain a-
Now, Miss Madam Mayor, I move that Resolution 2014-48 be adopted on the first reading, please.
I second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion on this?
Madam Vice Mayor, just so I can explain what's going on here. So we're, we're moving some money around, obviously. You see, the next item on the agenda is to purchase a, a city vehicle, and when we, we built or put together the building department, we knew that we were gonna have to have certain things, and one of them is a vehicle for the building official to drive. Right now, he's driving the old code enforcement vehicle, and I'm not a very tall or big guy. Frank is. I don't know how he gets in and out of it, to be quite honest with you, and it, it's, it's seen better days. From a philosophical management standpoint, I don't like city-owned vehicles, but there's always a, a reason for some of them, and this is, this is one of them. So the vehicle that he's currently driving will get passed down or demoted to Vince's parking enforcement folks. We have a truck there that probably needs to, has seen better days as well. And then Frank will get a, a vehicle probably, not necessarily, it, it needs to be stocked with certain things. He probably needs a ladder rack and the ability to throw things in the bed of a truck, you know, that type of building stuff. So just to explain, this isn't some perk of the job. This was always on the horizon. Frank actually volunteered to take the old code enforcement car until he could get to this point and see the success of the building department. So that's where we're at right now.
Okay, do we need to do a separate motion on that?
You do. So you need a, a separate motion for Resolution 48, and then you can go ahead and read number four and get a motion for number four on the agenda as well.
All right, so we already did the, the motion, first and second. Okay, so we need to take the roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Poe?
Yes.
Commissioner Schatz?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino.
Okay, at this time I'll entertain a motion for the authorization of the expenditures for the city vehicle purchased not to exceed $27,500.
I so moved, madam.
I second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Okay, please take the role.
Vice Mayor Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Poe?
Yes.
Commissioner Schatz?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino.
Next one will be Resolution 2014-49.
Yes, I'll read that by title only. Resolution 2014-49, a resolution of the city of Madeira Beach, Florida, establishing Sunday, December 14, 2014, Sunday, December 13, 2015, Sunday, December 11, 2016, Sunday, December 10, 2017, and Sunday, December 9, 2018, as the dates for the annual Florida Gulf Beaches Holiday Half-A-Thon, starting in Madeira Beach adjacent to City Hall, south to Madeira Way, west to Gulf Boulevard, heading north in the northbound lanes of Gulf Boulevard to Indian Shores, allowing temporary road restrictions to be created between 6:00 AM and 9:00 AM, to be field-adjusted as necessary by the Pinellas County Sheriff's Office, authorizing the mayor to sign the Florida Department of Transportation applications provided by the race director for temporary closing of a state road, providing for reading by title only, and providing for an effective date. That was a reading of Resolution 2014-49 by title only.
I make a motion that this commission pass Resolution 2014-49.
I second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
So what's the reason for the five years? Is it just easier?
Yeah, I, I thought you were gonna ask, why are we having a resolution for this, since he could just fill out an, an event application. I actually asked my staff that this morning when we were going through it. It's actually a requirement. He needs to have this to qualify for funding in a number of different areas, and so we just go ahead and approve it, you know, every five years or whatever to give him those dates. It also reserves those dates for planning purposes, and then, then they know. So if this was just a normal event, it wouldn't even be in front of you except being reported to you. So it's, it's at their request to have it done.
State funding? They get state funding?
They do get some state funding, but I think he's got sponsorships and other things like that, too. So when you go ask for sponsorship money, it's always easier to get a couple extra bucks if they know it's gonna be a recurring thing and it's, you know, solidified. So it, it helps him out quite a bit.
Well, is this another bridge besides the triathlon?
Yes. This is the Half-A-Thon, right?
Yeah. Thirteen point two?
Okay. The city clerk?
I'll answer.
The city clerk, could you take the role, please?
Vice Mayor Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Poe?
Yes.
Commissioner Schatz?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino.
Next one is Resolution 2014-50.
I'll read that Resolution by title only. A resolution of the city of Madeira Beach, Florida, amending the City of Madeira Beach Policy Handbook to provide that the regularly scheduled time for agenda-setting meetings be changed from 5:30 PM to 5:45 PM, and providing for an effective date. That was a reading of Resolution 2014-50 by title only.
I'll make the motion to pass Resolution 2014-50.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Madam Vice Mayor, again, just for the floor for 30 seconds. It, it's completely up to you guys. You don't have to have this meeting. And the reason why I implemented it early was, unlike some cities where the city manager by charter sets the agenda, you don't, you don't have that. And so I felt very early on in my tenure here, especially, not that it was chaotic, but whatever the right word was, it was a tumultuous time, that I thought it was inappropriate for staff to just dictate the issues that you were going to take up with no input from the Board of Commissioners. And that's really the issue, or the, the reason why we hold this meeting, so that you have an opportunity publicly or privately, frankly, to say, Shane, I would like to discuss this on a workshop or put this on the Board of Commissioners' agenda. As you can see from tonight, I don't think we've ever had one that lasted longer than five minutes, and so that's the reason for the change in time. But if you wanted to, you could completely eliminate this and just take what we give you. But I think it's a little CYA, frankly, for the city manager and staff, but it also gives you the opportunity to discuss what you need to have done, you know, to, to create your own agenda. That's why you're elected. And so I still appreciate it. I still like it. I know it's an extra 15 minutes on, on Board of Commissioners' nights, but if you bear with me, I, I'd certainly endorse it from my standpoint.
Me, too.
Yeah, absolutely. There is some transparency, too, with, with, you know, people knowing what we're gonna be talking about. So that's good. I like it.
Okay, the city clerk?
Just keep it short.
Take the role, please.
Five minutes, babe.
Five minutes. I hear you. Okay.
Vice Mayor Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
I'm talking here. Yes.
You said, take the role.
Yes.
Commissioner Poe?
Yes.
Commissioner Schatz?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino.
Next one will be ordinance 2014-15.
Yes, this is the first reading of ordinance 2014-15. I'll read it by title only. An ordinance of the city of Madeira Beach, Florida, amending the City of Madeira Beach Code of Ordinances, Chapter 2 Administration, Article 3 Division 2 Planning Commission, Section 2-77G Organization pertaining to Meeting Dates, Section 2-78C Conductive, Conduct of Hearing pertaining to Notification Requirements, Article 8 Special Magistrate, Section 2-503C Conduct of Hearing pertaining to Notification Requirements, Chapter 82 General Provisions, Section 8-2 Definitions, providing for the terms of budding, adjoining, and contiguous, providing for reading by title only, providing for severability, providing for repeal of ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith, and providing for an effective date thereof. That was a reading of ordinance 2014-15 by title only, and it does require a public hearing.
Madam Vice Mayor, I ask that this commission pass on first reading ordinance 2014-15.
I second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any public discussion?
Lynn got up and gave us such a great orientation last time. We've got this. Thank you for doing that.
The city clerk, please take your role.
Vice Mayor Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Poe?
Yes.
Commissioner Schatz?
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor Palladino.
Okay, the next portion of our agenda will be for reports and correspondence. City Commissioners, have anything to say?
I just wanted to mention, and I didn't, I was neglecting, the density-intensity resolutions that we passed are exciting. It's a new page for the city, and I'm excited that the businesses of Madeira Beach with the developers, along with the people that live here, are working so well together. I'm just excited about our short-term future and our long-term future. But I've never seen better things happening in the city of Madeira Beach, and I've been here for a long time.
Long.
Long time.
A lot of cities are requesting some of the legislation that we've been passing lately, especially in regards to development. So you'll see that the cities that are pro-development are not necessarily watching what we're doing, but seeing, you know, requesting those types of things. And the cities that aren't for it, and you don't have to be for it, everybody's got their own, you know, play on this, then they're not interested. But I think we're certainly paving the way for the Board of Commissioners to take an issue and, on a case-by-case basis, evaluate it and decide whether or not it's, you know, good for Madeira Beach or bad for Madeira Beach, frankly. And I think the things that we've passed so far is bubbling out there.
Especially these ordinances that pass on the second reading?
Yes.
For development. I've been waiting for that.
We both have.
I'm telling you, that's right, Sharon. We've been around the campus on that.
I think you'll see probably within the next three to six months, because that these ordinances have been passed now, that you'll see some sizable developments, at least in terms of site plans and things of that, come towards you. There's chatter about another hotel. I think you're all aware of that. The old LeBarox property, I think Jim Holden now is kind of was waiting for this to happen. And I think he'll get moving on it. I've seen renderings and a site plan already for that. And Dave and I have been working with them. In fact, we've got a dinner tomorrow night to hopefully solidify some of those things that we're working on there. So and the Berry Loft properties will probably become available now in the next 90 days.
That's going to pave the way for that.
Yeah. So I think you're going to see this first wave of development that we're experiencing right now, and then there'll be a tidal wave after that.
I just wanted to say that we're having this, our big arts and craft show right after Thanksgiving weekend. And just to remind everybody that that's coming in Madeira Beach and other items here away. But also, Christmas Boat Parade is just around the corner, so we've got to remember to mention that to people, start thinking about what to...
Dave's been working feverishly on that. He loves that parade, so.
He's working on it, Dave?
Dave loves the Boat Parade.
Oh, yeah. I'm sure he does.
Well, I just wanted to say that the deputy appreciation party that we had at the marina was really great. Your crew did a wonderful job in setting everything up. Well, we had plenty of food. Everything was good. Hamburgers and hot dogs. Mr. Lister, they were wonderful.
The fish was fantastic.
And the fish was great.
Fish was fantastic.
Everything was wonderful. And thank you so much for everything you did to set this up. Another thing I wanted to mention was the ceremony this morning at the Madeira Way for the fresh market. That was very successful. There was a lot of people there this morning.
Yeah, it was nice.
And the vendors, I mean, there was a good variety of different things there. It was just great. It really was. And one more thing is that since Mayor Palladino wasn't here Tuesday, I got to go in his place to bathe pines for the ceremony there for the veterans, and that was wonderful. There must have been 2,000 people, if not more, there. But it was a beautiful ceremony. The ROTC did a great job. Ken'swick Christian School Academy, they sang, and they were wonderful. We had Congressman Dave Jolly there speaking. It was a very nice turnout, very nice turnout. And I appreciate the invitation to go. I really enjoyed it. Thank you. That's all I had.
You know, we should let you be Vice Mayor more. You talk.
I talk.
Yeah.
Why else would I have to say? Mr. City Attorney, do you have any reports?
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up with the conversation earlier relative to the special magistrate hearing. You have not had one in many, many, many months here in Madeira Beach. There were two cases that were brought today. One is the first chronic nuisance ordinance case that we've prosecuted, and frankly, it's the first one in any city that I know that's been prosecuting them. So I'm glad to hear that it went off, well, to see that it went off so well. Deputy Luckett did a very good job testifying and preparing the case and getting it to its point where it was ready to move forward. There was a lot of testimony. There were a lot of documents received and evidence. The special magistrate took his time. The hearing itself took a little over an hour. And the other side did show up. There was a respondent there. So there was testimony and evidence received from the respondent as well. But the special magistrate made it known to this first property owner, property manager person, that they needed to get their act together, that he was very upset with what was happening. And so overall, I thought that the presentation and the case itself went very, very well for the first one that we moved forward on. He did rule, and he did find that there was a violation, that the property was a chronic nuisance property. He will enter his order within 10 days. We are, in the meantime, working on what it will take to bring the property into compliance, because basically what this does now is it authorizes the city to move forward to bring this particular property, and we don't really need to mention it here, but this particular property into compliance. And that could mean a lot of different things. Hiring security, establishing security systems, lighting systems, eviction proceedings for the nine tenants that are on the property or 10 tenants that are on the property. Whatever it's going to do, whatever we come to the resolution of what we think it will take to bring the property into compliance, we're going to move forward in doing that. I've talked to Deputy Luckett after the meeting. I've talked to the city manager about some possibilities. We'll nail that down. But I think that once all these other properties see what has happened with this first one, that hopefully they'll follow in line. It's kind of like the death penalty. If you see someone is going to get it, then maybe you won't do that particular crime. And I think that with this being pushed forward with Commissioner Poe and being the basis for this, and all these other cities following in line behind us, I was very happy with the result today. It'll be nice to get the first order that will be entered on this type of ordinance. The second case was not a chronic nuisance case. It was just a standard code violation case. And I thought that that was, went very well, too. The other deputy was there, and he testified. He prepared his case very, very well. Number of photographs, number of documents. And the other side was represented by an attorney, and they basically accepted the fact that we had such a good case and basically folded up their tent and didn't dispute what actually the deputy was testifying. So I was very happy about that result as well. And the case was set up as for the purposes of a repeat violation. So if the signed violation case happens again, that particular person will be fined up to $500 a day for every day that he violates that signed code violation. And if you want to know the particulars of the properties and/or the property owners, they'll be happy to talk to you about that after the meeting. So very good result today at this code hearing.
That's good.
And if you guys did not attend, which I know you didn't, Attorney Trust did an excellent job. I was most impressed. You didn't let him get away with anything. Nothing slipped.
Thank you.
I'm sitting there thinking, will he remember this? Will he remember that? You did.
Thank you.
I didn't even have to give you the cue cards.
That's good.
Mr. City Manager, did you have anything?
Yeah, just quickly here. This document, can you see it on your desk?
Yeah.
I need you to take a pen and circle November 20th, because if you read on, obviously there's a typo. The meeting's November 20th, not November 24th, as it states in the body of it. This Bitcoin thing is a bit, I don't want to call it a gimmick, because that sounds negative, but Bitcoin sponsors this bowl game, right? It's played at the trop. It's a big deal. Sizable universities will be involved. We could have actually an in-state game of Miami versus UCF. Notre Dame is a possible other candidate, you know, some pretty big schools. And they always have this beach bash, and that's what this document is about. And it kind of explains it to you. What that basically is, is the universities come down for a week or two weeks, and a couple of days before, they get to have a little bit of fun, and they have a beach party. And that's now going to happen instead of St. Pete Beach here in Madeira Beach. And to be viewed the day after Christmas on ESPN is some pretty good marketing for the city. So the Bitcoin part of it is only because Bitcoin is sponsoring this bowl. It used to be the Beef O' Brady Bowl, and now Bitcoin's taking over. So from a marketing standpoint, it just would be awfully convenient if we became the first city to, in the world, frankly, to be the official Bitcoin city or whatever. So we've scheduled some of these, like a town hall meeting. There's trainings going on all over the area lately, but I wanted to have one right here so that no one could say that we didn't offer, you know, the information. I would encourage you all to come, because after that meeting, if you're comfortable with it, the next week, we would have to pass a resolution stating that we endorse the idea of being the official Bitcoin city. And that comes along with a lot of press and prestige, too, whether or not you believe in Bitcoin as a currency or not, which I certainly wouldn't empty my savings account and invest in it right now. But if I was a vendor and it didn't cost me any money to offer that service, I think I would be relatively open-minded about it. And that's what this gentleman's going to come and present that night. So just so you're aware, it's the 20th. I believe that's next Thursday, right?
Yeah.
Then, this weekend...
When did you say it was going to change the date, honey?
No, no. There's just, there's two dates on this piece of paper.
Yeah.
The date is the 20th, not the 24th.
Oh, I see. Okay, I see it now.
I just wanted to make you aware of that.
Okay, thank you.
This weekend, another big cornhole tournament. And then, for those of you that don't know, that's a beanbag tossing tournament. And then, following that, there'll be a food rally on Madeira Way, where it's going to be bumper-to-bumper food trucks up and down Madeira Way and kind of like a street festival afterwards. I will be out of state, but I hear Terry Lister might be entering the tournament, and he's always a, he's a good beanbag thrower player. I don't want to say you're a good cornhole player.
Yeah, you don't want to say it on...
No, no, no. Anyway, go be sure to root him on and check that out. I think the thing on Madeira Way afterwards will be quite something, and that's going to be a routine gig that we do here in town now on a monthly basis as well. And then, last but not least, two things that I had accidentally omitted off of the agenda-setting agenda is, one is we continuously strive as a staff to centralize what we're doing, to make it make more sense from a process standpoint. And I think I'm rounding the corner on a possible consolidation and small reorganization on how I do things with some of the departments. So I wanted to run that by you. And then, secondly, and this may get political, and if it does, we don't have to make the change, but it was actually suggested to me by the city clerk, and I think it does make sense. Some time ago, we chose to do away with the public works department because of, I think, of staffing issues, regardless of whether or not those were relevant or germane. It happened. And Dave's new title of central services isn't widely known, especially in small communities. So if you see a dead critter on the road, you don't know to go to the website and say, oh, the central services guy is going to be the guy that I call to do that. But Dave is that guy. You know, anything streets-related, sewers-related, anything out there in the community, that's always public works. And I don't want to say that like it's no big deal, because three or four years ago, the decision was made to do away without that for some reason. But I don't think we're too small of a community to have a public works department. We're, in fact, a full-service city. And this isn't to sound cocky or detrimental to Reddington Shores, but Reddington Shores has a public works department. You know, all the Reddingtons, I think, have a public works department.
Yeah.
So I would really like to go back to that and have Dave supervise. Nothing's happening to Dave. You know, we'd have to adjust his title again. But I think we'd return to having a public works department. And I think communication between the public and us, in that regard, would be a lot easier, I think, because I think people are confused as to what the heck central services are. And central services is usually a county department. It's usually a runt of everything kind of thrown together, which frankly, that's what I did today when I got here. It's like, well, no one else is going to do it, buddy, so you're doing it. And we'll call you the central services department. I think I want to return to public works. And I know that's political, especially for the members that were on the board when it was done away with. And if that's not a good idea, I understand. I think I'm probably in a position to make that call, but I obviously need the support of the commission.
I think it's a great idea, because your citizens know what public works is. Most people understand what public works is. And I think it's great. I, you know, poor Dave. We call him for everything anyway. It's just going to be a new title, honey. It's not going to be any easier. It's just going to be a new title, and we're going to keep on calling you about everything.
Well, I...
I know, and I just, what I...
I think you bring up a good point, because we know that there is confusion out there, because Amy gets the general inquiries on the website, and it's those types of things. You know, oh, there's, my neighbor's fence blew down, or the sewer is blocked up, or there's a dead raccoon on the street.
Yes.
Take him across the...
That would be the tide.
Take him over to the park.
That was funny. That just happened. I'm like, Dave, what do you do with them? Never mind. Anyway, so they're not harmed for, so everybody at home knows that. But anyway, I think I want to return to that. I just want to know that my commission, who's been very supportive on all my reorganizations, is behind me on that as well. And I know it's political for some of you. And so if that revisits some harmful memories or whatever...
I don't think anybody at this podium has any, don't have any political issues on my mind.
No.
I don't think there's one on this podium.
I didn't want to get rid of public works in the beginning, so just don't go there with me.
Would you be bringing them back here into the city? Or are you going to keep them where they're at?
It's just a name change.
Just a name change. Okay.
Dave's department and his, you know, I emailed him today. You probably didn't even see it. You know, we changed his title and just get central services away and bring back a name that people recognize. That's it. Nobody's getting hired. There's no director getting hired or anything like that. It's just for the ease of getting things figured out here.
You're right, Shane. They don't know what central service is. You know, I mean, this is...
It's a Wisconsin thing.
It is a Wisconsin thing.
Is that a Wisconsin?
See?
I was the central services director before I came here.
There you go.
I'll tell you, I was the public works guy, the building guy, streets guy, IT, purchasing, and something else. I don't even remember. But it's just like, you know, it's always a conglomerate of whatever. And that's indeed what this is, but the conglomerate is streets, you know, stormwater, all the things that Dave deals with. It's public works.
Other than the marina, the marina title's...
Well, and...
Slash marina.
That's exactly what it'll be. That's what the email said today. So I think his title will be Marina Director, Public Works Director, and just one guy does both jobs. And so you'll hear, you know, the usual naysayers, oh, Crawford's hiring another department head. And no, it's got nothing to do with it. It's a change in title, and that's it.
Yeah.
Anyway, we'll throw that all on the workshop. We'll take it up then.
Okay.
On my list.
City clerk?
I just have one quick thing. I need you all to sign a paper before you leave tonight.
Okay.
Okay?
All right.
I don't think they all heard you.
I thought he said workshop. He's going to be on a workshop.
I'm just going to bring it to you in a final form so that you're aware of it. I don't really need, I don't want to be that guy, but I don't really need your approval to do what I need to do with my employees. But obviously, obviously, you need to be on board with it. And I think the clerk just said that she needs you all to sign a document before you split, so don't run out of here too fast.
You have to sign something.
All of you do for the closing for tomorrow. So please don't...
Very important.
Closing for...